Share my screen. Good evening, members of the planning board. The planning department. I guess the first item on the agenda is an extension of conditional final approval. That's for number eleven seventy-one, Fierillo Estates in St. James. The applicant requests an extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision number eleven seventy-one, map of Fierillo subdivision. The subdivision number eleven seventy-one, map of Fierillo subdivision, received conditional final approval from the planning board on January twenty-second, two thousand twenty. Approval of the subdivision expired on January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. The applicant submitted a request for a fourth extension on January fourth, two thousand twenty-one. The applicant has indicated, excuse me, that was two thousand twenty-two. The applicant has indicated they need additional time in order to file the map in the office of the Suffolk County clerk. The planning department has no objection to the request. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. It's Planning Board Resolution Number Blank, two thousand twenty-two, Extension of Conditional Final Approval for number eleven seventy-one, map of Fierillo subdivision. Whereas the planning board has considered the request of Vincent Amicicia to extend the conditional final approval for subdivision number eleven seventy-one, map of Fierillo subdivision. Now therefore be it first resolved. The planning board hereby approves a retroactive one hundred eighty-day extension of time to the conditional final approval for subdivision number eleven seventy-one, map of Fierillo subdivision to expire on July tenth, two thousand twenty-two. And we have the affidavit of posting.
Thank you, Matt. Is there anyone representing the applicant who would like to address the board at this time?
There is Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm Vincent Amicicia from Gresham, Ziegler and Amicicia, PC at one ninety-nine East Main Street, Suite Two, Smithtown, New York. Good evening. Very simply, I rise in support of the proposed planning board resolution, and I ask that the board grant the application.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on this matter? Are there any questions from the board? None?
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is, I apologize, ma'am. I'm one of the homeowners in here, could I, I've never been on one of these calls, my wife just told me about it. Is there a way for me to just understand what the zoning is for, what the request is for?
And this is on the map of Fierillo subdivision?
Yes, yes. Oh yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I don't want to say that if I'm correct, it's the one on Westminster Court, I apologize if I'm talking about the wrong one.
That's going to be coming up soon.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
That's okay, sir. Okay, well, we'll hear from you in a little while.
Okay, I'll shut up then.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I will proceed in the matter of number eleven seventy-one, map of Fierillo subdivision, a move that we close the hearing.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The hearing is closed. And in the matter of extension of conditional final approval, number eleven seventy-one, map of Fierillo subdivision, a move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The motion is adopted.
Thank you very much.
Okay, have a good night.
The next item on the agenda, number eleven eighty-six, Wade subdivision, that was for an extension of conditional final approval. We received a letter from the applicant withdrawing it, they were able to file the map. So there's no need for that extension anymore, so we can skip over that one.
Disregard, Matt.
What's that?
We disregard it, correct?
Right, yeah. So that leads us to our next, it's a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals for number eleven ninety-five, Jamie Anita Estates in Wisconsin. This matter involves a request from the Board of Zoning Appeals to the plan, to the planning board to review and issue a recommendation regarding area variances currently pending before the Board of Zoning Appeals. That's case number one eight six two six for the above referenced subdivision application. The yield of this property in compliance with the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations is two lots. The applicant is requesting the following variances to effectively increase the yield from two lots to three lots. On lot one, reduce the minimum road frontage from forty feet to twenty-five feet, and reduce minimum lot frontage from one hundred feet to ninety-five feet. On lot two, reduce minimum road frontage from forty feet to twenty-five feet, and reduce minimum lot frontage from one hundred feet to ninety-five feet. And on lot three, reduce minimum lot frontage from one hundred feet to ninety feet, reduce minimum side yard setback from sixteen feet to four feet, and reduce total side yard setback from thirty-four feet to twenty-seven feet. The planning board has the authority to grant certain variances within the subdivision. However, pursuant to section three twenty-two, thirty-point-four of the zoning ordinance, the planning board does not have the authority to grant variances that would alter the density of the zoning district. This is an application to subdivide a one point four seven acre parcel into three single-family residential lots. The site is on R fifteen and is surrounded by R fifteen zoning and single-family dwellings. Property has ninety feet of frontage on Lake Avenue and fifty feet of frontage on the terminus of Westminster Court South. There is an existing dwelling to remain fronting Lake Avenue, and two new dwellings are proposed to front Westminster Court South. All the lots comply with the minimum lot area in the R fifteen zoning district, however, the above referenced variances are pending before the BZA. Article sixteen, section two seven seven dash six of Town Law authorizes the Board of the Board of Zoning Appeals to grant area variances within subdivision but requires the BZA request a written recommendation from the planning board concerning the proposed variances. Town Law does not describe the criteria that the planning board is supposed to use in developing a recommendation to the BZA. However, it seems likely that the recommendation should be based around the planning board's core mission regarding subdivision approval. If you could just mute yourself until the time for the public to speak, thank you, there's some feedback. This recommendation does not examine the requested variances with respect to the five area variance criteria described in section two six seven Z of Town Law as the BZA's task with evaluating the requested variances with respect to those criteria. The existing dwelling on lot three will not have any impact on the existing infrastructure nor will negatively impact health, safety, and welfare of neighborhood considering it existed in its current location since nineteen fifty. It appears the adequacy of access and infrastructure on Westminster Court South is sufficient for the proposed dwellings. There's an existing cul-de-sac on Westminster Court South with a pavement radius of forty feet that is sufficient for large vehicles to access the site and turn around. An alternative to the road frontage variances on lot one and two is to extend the cul-de-sac approximately ninety feet north. This would provide at least forty feet of road frontage for each home and provide access to the property north of the subdivision. The board should consider this alternative, however, it will disturb more of the environment and most likely require the relocation of existing drainage on Westminster Court South. The planning board wishes to proceed with the proposed layout. The following resolution is offered for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number twenty twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, supportive zoning appeals recommendation for number eleven ninety-five, map of Jamie Anita Estates. Whereas the planning board has considered the request of the Board of Zoning Appeals for a recommendation regarding variances associated with the subdivision number eleven ninety-five, map of Jamie Anita Estates. Now therefore be it first resolved. The planning board hereby recommends the Board of Zoning Appeals approve the variances associated with the subdivision number eleven ninety-five, map of Jamie Anita Estates. It's BZA case one eight six two six for the reasons presented in this memorandum. Second resolved that this recommendation pertains solely to the variance request before the Board of Zoning Appeals and not the proposed lot layout, extent of regrading, building location, public improvements, or other aspects of subdivision design within the purview of the planning board. Third resolved that nothing contained herein shall be construed or deemed as implicitly or explicitly approving or endorsing on the merits any subsequent request for approval of any subdivision of this property, whether or not the request arises out of any variances granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals for said property.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Is there anyone here representing the applicant who would like to address the board at this time?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Vincent Tramarko, I represent the applicant. We've submitted the affidavits to planning this afternoon. Of course, we agree with the planning department's recommendation, I'd just like to bring up
I'm sorry, but I'm not getting any of that on the record after you wanted to bring up a few points, Mr. Tramarko.
Okay, I guess I have to keep looking at the computer, I'm sorry.
Yes, please, please.
Okay. The, about fifteen years ago, the map of, I'm gonna have to look map of Oak Run at Wisconsin was submitted to this planning board for approval, and it was approved. And as you can see, the street dead ends right now in the cul-de-sac up against the subject property. And I believe the purpose of that was to eventually allow access to those two lots that you can see, which is posted on, I guess, on your screen. The other thing that Matt Collado mentioned was, well, we could go straight through and put a cul-de-sac and separate the lots greater than what we proposed, but that would only create more environmental issues and cause us to remove more trees and so forth, so this seems to be the best way to move forward with the application. There's minimal effect on the environment, as you can see. It's just two driveways coming off the cul-de-sac. Certainly, the cul-de-sac can be shared by two more homeowners, just as the present homeowners now share the cul-de-sac that was done, as I said, fifteen years ago. The lot number three, as Matt also indicated, that was built many, many years ago, and there is a request for a four-point-five-foot variance on a structure, however, again, that was done many, many years ago, and that exists, and it would exist no matter what the board decided to do with this application. So we ask the board for its favorable consideration, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tramarko. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on this matter, and if so, please state your name and address for the record?
Madam Chairman, Madam Chairman, I'm Philip DiAmelia, homeowner from nineteen Westminster Court South. So I'm right over onto the, that picture that was on the screen, to the right-hand side just before that particular property. The first question, I'm not an attorney, so I'm just, I'm trying to figure out what was on the screen beforehand as they're describing. Is that this is just to shrink or lessen the distance of those two properties, lot one and lot two, is to make it a little bit smaller, so is that the scope of this hearing is just to in- increase lot three and just make lot one and two a little bit smaller? Is that the scope of what this request is for?
I can help out, let me just share my screen.
Thank you.
Just for a little clarity, Matthew, thank you.
Yeah, so the zoning ordinance requires that your property have forty feet of road frontage, so meaning, you know, your front yard property line has to have forty feet along the road. This is a fifty-foot wide right-of-way. So if you split that into two, you get twenty-five apiece, so they're looking to go from the forty feet to twenty-five feet with respect to lot area, they exceed the minimum lot area requirements for R fifteen, R fifteen, you need fifteen thousand square feet. I think these lots are roughly like twenty thousand square feet apiece.
Okay, so, did I add an explanation? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Collado.
Yeah, sorry.
No, 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 you, I thought you were done, I don't want, I won't let you finish.
I'm done.
Okay, so the question I have is, when you're changing the the distance of the forty-foot, you know, I would like to mention that, you know, since I'm at that house, we have a problem currently today with mail, you know, park, any, parking in that, anywhere in that cul-de-sac, the only spot which we actually can currently park is actually the spot that you're now putting in the driveways. We have issues with the mailman wanting full fifteen-foot clearance to a, to our mailbox now, and when you're doing it now, you're making it even harder. It's even more complex for us to even try to park anywhere on that street now. And it's not to say whether we want a through street or not, but making this even wider is now reducing the amount of foot even in front of our house because we have complexities with mail delivery already. And I will say that I'm not sure what was there before, what was approved prior when they first built these houses, when we first purchased them, but aesthetically, I have not, in, definitely in the town of Smithtown or Wisconsin, when you, if you go around to cul-de-sacs, do you see, do you see cul-de-sacs that have streets or driveways off the other end of them, where now you have two houses butt up against each other? I understand that there's a house that was, if that was one full lot, and there was a house there, and there was a, you know, the regular driveway that goes to it, but this seems to be excessive with the two driveways, which is, like I said, reducing the amount of space that we have currently now to park any cars in the street, which is almost impossible to begin with.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Is there anybody else who would like to be heard on this matter?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, please, ma'am, please go ahead first.
Thank you, I appreciate that. My name is Damon DiAmelia, Philip who just spoke is my husband, we live at nineteen Westminster Court South. I believe it's lot two, the, we're, the house at the end of the cul-de-sac, right next to lot two, I believe it is. And I just, I just wanted to add to that as far as the mail, and I believe he said it was fifteen feet clearance. To my knowledge, the mailman has informed us that it actually is more than that. So in essence, at this point right now, if we want our mail delivered, we've been notified that we are not supposed to put any cars in front of our home, directly in front of our home. And the only spots we are allowed to park at this point are where the proposed driveways are going. So I'm just reiterating what he is saying, I wasn't sure if it was the fifteen feet. To my knowledge, it is more than that that they are expecting to have clearance, which means it's the entire part in front of our home that we can't park, living in a cul-de-sac.
And I'm sorry, I just want to, Philip DiAmelia, again, they have not delivered the mail. So they have actually taken action where, if there was a car that was there, they've held our mail for many days.
Multiple times.
Yes, multiple times.
You can only take one person at a
I'm sorry, sorry, I'm sorry. I was just, it's been multiple times where they have not delivered the mail, so I'm done speaking, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
While I'm on, this is still Dana, the other issue, we're right now in snow season, we're expecting a snowstorm this weekend as a matter of fact. And my question to you is, where are the plans to put snow? Because when the plowers come currently, that snow, especially if it's excessive, it is literally pushed to the point where those two driveways are going to be. So that's another concern of mine as far as the snow removal. I don't see, and like my husband had mentioned, even aesthetically, just having four driveways butt up against the end of a cul-de-sac. Not only safety issues we could discuss as far as the snow removal, the mail we already mentioned, there's, there's numerous issues that arise, never mind safety with children, we have plenty of children in the cul-de-sac as well. The multitude of driveways at the end of the cul-de-sac is problematic for us as homeowners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter?
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, hello?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, I heard someone else. My name is Eileen Edelson, twenty-two Westminster Court South.
Thank you.
Okay. I am not directly across from the DiAmelias, I'm right next door, Phyllis Bochansky is on, she's having technical difficulties. But she's the one, you know, she's been researching this, and she, she has a lot of issues because she is right across from the DiAmelias, so she's on the other side. So I just want to state for her, speak for her, and then speak for myself. She's having exactly the same problems as the DiAmelias are having. Where, nowhere to park, the garbage pails, you can't leave, you can't put garbage pails out because there's no, there's no room. Like when it snows, there's no, you can't put your garbage pails anywhere in that cul-de-sac. So it's going to be four driveways and four people trying to park when you're not allowed to park because they can't get their mail, sometimes Phyllis's mail, Bochansky's mail is delivered to my house, and I give it to her because she has the same issue about parking. And when she has company and they park, she doesn't get her mail either. So another issue is that when we are trying to back out of our driveways, we have to be very careful because we all leave the same time in the morning and with children and so forth going here and there. We have to be very, very careful not to hit each other the way it is, the way the cul-de-sac is set up and the way the houses are set up. With two more driveways, there is not going to be, we're not going to, somebody is going to get hurt, there are children playing in that cul-de-sac all day long, even in the winter, and it's going to be very dangerous with two driveways right there, they're going to, there's going, always going to be somebody in the way. Cars in the way, where, you can't have company, so we, you're breaking, you're, you're not breaking through, but you're creating driveways, so where their company, you know, the two new houses, their company is going to be in the street because you can't have like strangers parking your driveway, so they're going to be in the street, so there's going to, there's no room for garbage pails, there's no room for mail, there's no room for, for anybody to park. It's a very dangerous situation. And there is just not enough, there's not enough room as it is. And to put two driveways in a very small spot, I know it doesn't look small to you, you know, on plans, but it's a very, so there's going to be four driveways in a row all day long, we're all on the run, we're all parents. You know, kids in school playing, children playing, we have more, we had more kids moved in, so now there's more, even more children playing down at the end. You know, that's the, it's the place to be. It's a very, very dangerous situation already among us the way it is. Putting two driveways there with garbage and mail, I mean, what, what, we have to go to the post office to get the mail because you want to put driveways in, in two houses, we have to go, go pick up a man, it just isn't fair. And we can't put our garbage out because the garbage men, you know, want the garbage in a certain place? So there's already not enough room for the garbage men to, to get around in that cul-de-sac. How are two more driveways? I can't even fathom the idea of two more driveways and grocery drop-offs, and it's all happening at the same time, and there's a, it's like a line waiting down the road. It, it, it's already a disaster. I, I just can't fathom how, you know, to destroy the way, I mean, I mean, we already have issues the way we're living. To destroy the way we're living and what we have to contend with on top of what those people are going to have to, I don't even know who's going to want to buy those houses. Because there's just driveways and there's so much congestion as it is. I don't even see it happening at all. You want your driveway to be in the cul-de-sac, no, you want your house, if you built one house facing the cul-de-sac, nobody wants to go in a driveway and then go to their house when parking can't happen in that, in your driveway, strangers can't come, there's nowhere to park, they're not going to be able to get their mail because we're all parking our cars where they're supposed to be. Those driveways are supposed to be, so I don't understand how this can happen, the the subdivision can happen at all. It's a physical impossibility.
Thank you for your input. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter?
Yes, ma'am.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Brian Beedenbender, I live at fourteen Bella Court, Wisconsin, New York. My property is directly to the south of lot one, so on the map that was on the screen is directly to the left of that. So while I would certainly love to continue living near a piece of woods, I'm realistic and I understand that people own property and they have rights to develop that. But I don't think that they have rights to develop in any way that they want, and with all due respect to counsel, who I know has been doing this for a very long time, and I am not a lawyer. I don't think that the reason this road isn't going in and being extended is for an environmental purpose. Because environmentally, you're taking a lot of trees down, the reason the road's not going in is because it allows you to build a bigger house and to get a bigger financial pull out of a property, and I have no issue with that. People have a right to sell a piece of property and people have a right to get what they want. However, this doesn't really make sense, like the houses on my street, which are right behind it, all face the road. The houses on their street on Westminster Court all face the road, creating two new houses that don't face the road just for the pure reason that that's the best way to get money out of it. I get that, but it's not necessarily in the character of the neighborhood. I know that there's going to be a house in those woods behind me, I don't like it, but everybody has a property right, but they don't have a right to build it this way when every other house looks the other way, so I'm in support of the concerns, I don't live the same concerns of my neighbors on Westminster Court, but this will be a house that I have to look out at my backyard, and it, it should be facing the same way all those other houses are, and if it was, I have to live with that, but I don't think this subdivision, as designed, should be approved, especially in light of the fact that the town's planner has informed the planning board that it does have an alternative, and it can consider an alternative of extending that road further. So what I would ask the board to do is strongly consider that alternative. And I understand that would have an impact on the property, but your due consideration of that alternative, I think, would alleviate some of the concerns for my neighbors on Westminster Court, and to make the view out the back of my house the same as it is for Ms. Bochansky's house. She has a big house, it looks beautiful, it's right there, it's facing the road. I don't want to face the side of the road, just show me another house that's facing the same way, and I would ask you to strongly consider that. Madam Chairwoman, thank you for your time, members of the board, thank you for your time and your thorough consideration of our thoughts.
Thank you for your input, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter?
Yes, Christine Sheridan, twenty-one Westminster Court South in Wisconsin.
Can you spell your last name, please?
That's okay, it's Sheridan, S-H-E-R-I-D-A-M.
Thank you.
I don't believe that the zoning should be changed for these you know, parcels of land to, first of all, come off of our road. We paid for our homes to be in a private cul-de-sac. Right now, this land is zoned as Lake Avenue South. It should not be allowed to be included as Westminster Court South. And by no means at all should the forty-foot regulation be allowed to be twenty-five feet. That is without a question, and if we need to get a petition and get an extension of time and get the entire neighborhood to sign, I request that at this point. Because they shouldn't be allowed to just go in there and change the zoning rules when our homes have separate rules. And that's how I feel, they shouldn't be able to benefit off of our homes costing more money, and they'll get more money because our homes are worth more money. Why don't they zone it so they have a separate road off of Lake Avenue? It shouldn't be allowed, and it shouldn't happen, and that's all I have to say, thank you so much.
Thank you for your input. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter? Hello?
Hello?
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter?
Yes.
Name and address for the record.
Phyllis Bochansky, twenty Westminster Court South, Wisconsin, New York.
Okay.
This is, this is, okay, this is my first Zoom meeting, so bear with me. Okay, I agree with everything that everyone has said. The houses, the way they're being built are not facing the street. It does not conform with the neighborhood. These driveways, in my opinion, are way too close to each other. I will be backing out. The new home with their driveway will be backing out, we will be rear-ending each other. A proposal maybe to cut that street. When I purchased my house, on my plans, it had possible future roadway. So they were planning on opening up that road. If they opened it up, these houses will be facing a street. There will be more parking, they'll be parking in front of the new homes. Snow plowing is definitely an issue. They put all that snow right up against the, the cul-de-sac. I don't know where they're going to put it. Garbage pails, like Eileen had mentioned. Just putting these houses there just do not conform with the neighborhood. There's no frontal footage. School buses will be dropping off their children or picking up their children. And they'll be waiting for the, for the children to come out and we need to get out to go to work. So I, I just don't understand. I mean, if you come and look at, at the size of the property here, you'll agree. Let's see, what else? There's limited parking to begin with, and I understand the D'Amelias' issues with the mail. It's, it's definitely a problem. And it just doesn't conform with the neighborhood. It's just an eyesaw. Thank you.
Thank you for your input, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on this matter at this time?
Is there something else I can say? I'm sorry. On two Oak Run, they built that house sideways, facing Oak Run. That has no backyard, but it does have a side yard. It's a brand-new house going up. Why can't they build one house facing the cul-de-sac? And I get it, you know, they want to make money off of a, a piece of property. They're trying to get the most for their money. I get that, but it's just not going to conform with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your input. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter?
I think Mr. Keaney is trying to speak, but he's muted.
I guess, Mr. Keaney, if you can hear us, if you can unmute yourself.
Who's trying to speak? Oh, there you go, okay.
You hear me now?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Kevin Carney, I live at two sixty, Lake Avenue South in Wisconsin.
Thank you. Do you like to speak?
Yes, please. As I said at the other meeting on the eleventh, if, if these variances were granted, it would close off that street from continuing to reach my property and make it impossible for me to develop the back of my property. It would also make the lot behind me, am I still here? Yeah. The lot behind me, landlocked, so we could never be sold or developed. As the previous speaker said, it was clearly the intent to connect the two halves of Westminster back when those houses were initially developed. And in fact, the builder at that time offered Fred Hall, the owner of two sixty-four at the time, to buy his property, but he offered him too little so he wouldn't sell. If he had sold, it would have, Westminster would have come right up to the edge of my property at that time. I don't have access, that, the back part of my property, which is shy of half an acre, would not have access to a road if you blocked this off and you have another proposal pending at the other half of Westminster to waive a, a previous agreement to award some property to the town. I assume that was to keep keep the, the access open for Westminster for future use. Anyway, it would be a serious detriment to me and to my finances and to the, the use of my property if you were to proceed and grant these variances on Lot Two and Three, if that is. I have no objection to, no, that's, I believe it's one and two in the back on Westminster. The variance for Lot Three, I have no objection to. That's my neighbor next door, he's been there, the house has been there all along, there's no problem with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter? Again, just to let all the people who did speak, just make you aware, they were not making any decisions tonight on the development of this property. It's just a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals on the variances. And thank you very much for your input.
Could I ask, could I ask when the recommendation will be made and whether we'll be able to find out what that recommendation was?
Mr. Colado, would you have any information on that?
Well, it's up to you, it's up to you guys, you can make a recommendation.
We can vote on it tonight.
I, I guess the question is, if we make our recommendation tonight, and this does go before the Board of Zoning Appeals, the gentleman is just asking about what meeting that would be, would that be the next meeting or is there a?
I don't know when it would go back to the
Okay, alright, thank you.
I'm not aware, I'll stop my head.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Colado.
Excuse me, can I say something?
Wait, 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 wait. If, if you're going to speak again, you have to identify yourself, please.
I'm sorry. My name is Phyllis Bochansky, twenty Westminster Court South.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, my question was, when you are having these meetings, are we, are we going to be notified in writing, like we did with the first meeting? We had certified letters. For this meeting here on the planning board, we were not notified. I just saw a sign that was put up on my, my block and it wasn't even put up on Lake Avenue in front of that house. It was put up, but I believe on Monday morning, I believe it was put up because my sign was put up on Thursday and then I called the town to let them know. And they said, no, that sign that was in front of my house was not supposed to be there, it was supposed to be on Lake Avenue South. So if I didn't, if that, they didn't make that mistake, I would never have known about the meeting. So my question is, how are we going to be notified with future meetings?
Well, if it's, if I'm, am I correct, Mr. Colado, that if it does go before the Board of Zoning Appeals, that will be posted again, correct?
Not, not necessarily. When it goes, applications before the Board of Zoning Appeals, there's a sign on the property and there are certified letters sent out to neighbors within two hundred feet. This board, the planning board, there's only a sign on the property, there's no mailings required. We heard about this sign last week that it was, we issued two signs to the applicant to put on Westminster Court South and Lake Avenue South. Somebody called saying there wasn't one on Lake Avenue, so we gave him another sign to put up. They're required to put it up five days before, so Thursday's a little bit early, it doesn't need to technically be up on Thursday. But, I mean, Mr. Tramarko is the applicant, I mean, he can, if he wants to chime in and say he posted the sign, I didn't go out there and drive by it, so.
I thank you. Mr. Tramarko, would you like to give any input on this situation?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We got notified that the sign was down. I don't put up signs, I have someone that does that. His name is Gene Alley. He initially did affidavits that he put up both signs. Apparently, one sign either fell down or was knocked down or whatever. And as soon as the planning department called us, we sent them out again with a second sign. As Matt indicated, there is no requirement of certified mails, mailing with respect to the planning board. Of course, there is one with the Board of Zoning Appeals. But there is none with the planning board. But I'd like to comment on a couple of comments that were made. And maybe work backwards a little bit. Mr. Carney's property, I'm not sure where it is. Could, Matt, could you put up the, the map and, and?
Yeah, I'll share, so outlined in blue is the subject property.
Right.
These two parcels to the north, I believe, are his properties.
No.
No? This one? Okay.
But this one behind me is also then landlocked if you proceed with these variances.
I, I'm not sure. It looks like there are houses on the one on the left side.
I think this, this lot has a house on it, this one.
Yeah.
I believe it's just like a garage or something, or shed.
No, it's a cottage.
Cottage.
Okay.
So he, he already has, yeah, it seems like he already has two dwellings, or?
It's owned by the same person, yes.
Okay.
Alright.
The driveway that makes it a flag lot.
Right, well, I could see the long flagpole there. So there is access. In any event, I always thought that living on a cul-de-sac was a great thing. Maybe it isn't, I don't know, but.
Only if you do.
We could, you know, it's certainly possible to extend the road and the cul-de-sac to meet the forty-foot requirement, and I guess that would be, maybe go halfway into the lots that we proposed to build. Generally speaking, the highway department, when that happens and the planning board requires it, they do take out that portion of the cul-de-sac that originally existed. So you don't have an hourglass-type situation. So it is possible, we wouldn't have to go all the way in the lot to do it, we just have to go far enough in to gain the forty feet. And the cul-de-sac would then be reduced as far as what's existing now. Unless the highway department says, okay, you can have a, an hourglass cul-de-sac. So, you know, that's
My concern, however.
What's that?
That would not address my concern, however, I would still be blocked.
That's correct, that's correct, but that's, that's a different issue. And I guess, you know, the, the, the board, the planning board could rule on that. And I don't know how, because we would have to, my client would have to make arrangements and agreements and contracts with other people that you have, apparently, I should say, have no control over. Certainly, you know, if we could get more building lots and they were legal, I'm sure that my client would, would think about that. But for the present time, this is the application. And I just want everybody to be clear that if we move that cul-de-sac up, we could gain the forty foot, and, and Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, we wouldn't have to go to the other side. And, and again, do you want a, a through street there? So there's all kinds of issues that have to be thought about. We have a requirement of fifteen thousand square feet, that's the zoning. The smallest lot that we propose now is nineteen thousand and change. So I think this is a better proposal. It, it, it certainly doesn't affect the, the environment as much as it would if we ran the street even halfway through or extended the cul-de-sac. So I don't know if the highway department would even allow a double hourglass cul-de-sac. Maybe there are some in town, I don't know with them. But that's, that's the other issue. So I asked for the board to favorably recommend to the to the Board of Zoning Appeals with respect to this application, because that's what's before them, either rec, either to recommend it or, or to not recommend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tramarko. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter? Are there any questions from the board on this matter?
Matt, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Marquesi?
Yeah.
What would it be to, like Ben said, it seems like if we can move that cul-de-sac halfway in there, it would resolve all the people's problems that called tonight and would make a, a better, a better proposal.
I just said it would resolve mine.
Hold on, let me, let me
Everybody could mute now, except people who are speaking?
Yeah, I mean, if, if you wanted to extend the cul-de-sac in a way that would provide access to this property here, I think it's going to be difficult to provide access there. Putting a bend in a road like that probably wouldn't be practical.
Yeah.
Like Mr. Tramarko said, when you extend cul-de-sacs, the existing cul-de-sac gets removed. So all the people that, you know, used to have the turnaround in front of their house, that's no longer going to be there. You don't typically have two turnarounds right next to each other, just doesn't really make sense.
Didn't most of the people that would call said that they would be better off with a straight street than the cul-de-sac?
Yes, this is actually Philip, this is Philip D'Amelia from nineteen Westminster Courts Out. If that would, of, of course, as a homeowner, I bought the house being the end of the cul-de-sac and however the land is going to be zoned, is, you know, as long as within certain guidelines, I would prefer it to be obviously the way it is before these two lots were built. That being said, the fact that if those were straight and that was further in enough into that, into their properties, such as the road was straight all the way through to that property line, so I do have the ability to park on that street or someone else could park on that street, like any other normal, like my neighbor the Albano's who are right next to me, they park on the street before our house. I would not be opposed to that, that would not. So if, if this whole cul-de-sac was moved into that as if this road was straight through up to that property line and then the cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac was there, I would be open to saying, I could at least understand that. That would, that would make sense that you're just now extending the properties such as, such that Lot Two and Lot, oh, I'm sorry, Lot Two, when I think that was one, I apologize. Yeah, Lot One and Lot Two are no, you're just, where my, mine is Lot Seven and, and, and Phyllis's is Lot Six. You're basically just making it the next set where the houses would be the same direction as ours and the cul-de-sac has just moved further in. I'm not saying it addresses the gentleman's problem with he, he's landlocked. I'm just saying that from excluding his particular issue, that at least would present to be the same as any other property in, you know, Wisconsin or things that, you know, in our neighborhood that look the same. That would at least, it would present the same way. I, it's not ideal, but at least it's something that I can understand why you're doing it.
Thank you.
But just to clarify a few things, obviously, you know, there's a resolution before you with the existing layout. I recommended in my memo, the board consider the alternative of extending it. If they want to do that, I mean, I would hold off. I don't really like to provide recommendations on the fly like that. I like to, you know, write them out and make sure it's done correctly. But those are my, you know, the options before the board.
So Matt, can we postpone it for tonight? And make a new proposal extending that cul-de-sac?
Yes, if the chair, if the chair, chairwoman wanted to.
I think, I think would be a good idea to, to, to attend this meeting.
If you wanted to.
Or a little bit to this matter, I believe that would be in order tonight.
I think so.
So we can leave the hearing open? Is that how we'll do that, Matt, so that they don't have to post it again? Is that what we'll do?
Yeah, and before, I also want to get, I mean, the planning department, we just look at it from a zoning and land use perspective. You know, we do have other departments that review subdivisions, highway, traffic engineering. So I don't want to speak on behalf of those departments for their review. Obviously, there's engineering that goes on when you're extending roads and whatnot. So I believe getting some sort of input from them is wise, just, you know, to make sure everything is done correctly. But if the board wants to adjourn this, we can do that. I don't know if we have it. I, I don't want to say it could be ready for the next meeting. Might take, you know, to get people's opinions on things, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you wanted to, if you wanted to hold off on it, that's, I'm fine with that.
Do you want to do something, maybe in March, Mr. Clado?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we could, try to look at the calendar. We got February sixteenth and March ninth.
March ninth, right.
And March thirtieth.
What about the end of the month, March, March thirtieth? What do you think, Matt?
Uh, yeah, that's, I mean, that's probably more than enough time.
Yeah, that would give us a lot of time, then we'd be able to consult all the departments and come up with some other conclusions of the recommendation. Would that be okay, Mr. Clado? March thirtieth, would that be good if we did postpone it till then?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions from the board? Okay, so in the matter of number eleven ninety-five, map of Jamie and Edith Estates, I move that we adjourn this hearing to the March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the planning board.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? None? The motion is adopted. Thank you. Okay, I think the next order of business is.
Just to clarify, clarify for people on the Zoom meeting, there won't be, since they adjourned to a date certain, there won't be any notifications.
Just to confirm, that was March thirtieth?
March thirtieth. It won't be notification, so, and it also won't be, have to be posted anymore, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Will, will it be the same, will they post something, will it be the same Zoom info? Like how will we, how will we at least get the Zoom info information to join the call if you're not posting it?
It will be on the, I mean, there'll be an agenda for that meeting. If anything changes, like, I mean, I can't predict the future. I don't know what the end of March is gonna be like, if we'll have a Zoom meeting or if we go back in person. Obviously, if it goes back in person, it has to be re-advertised again, so the, you know, the location and all that stuff is out there for people. But for now, we'll just stick with March thirtieth Zoom meeting. Maybe we'll just have them post it just to cover, you know, cover ourselves. But thank you.
Thank you. And, and please, you know, make sure you mark it on your calendars so that you'll be able to, again, you'll check the sign, but also pretty much it'll be the March thirtieth meeting of this board. And all are invited for their input, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Excuse me, I have one quick question.
Your name again?
Dana Demilia, nineteen Westminster Court South. Any chance that this date will move or it's locked for the thirtieth? If we're not necessarily gonna get notified, it's a hundred percent on the thirtieth, correct? It's not, there's no chance of this being moved without our notification?
If it's moved, you'll be notified.
Okay, that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, then. Now we can move on to the rest of the meeting. I move that we adopt the minutes of the January fifth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the planning board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? None? The motion is adopted. And now I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
When is our next meeting?
Fourteenth, February sixteenth.
February sixteenth.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the meeting, this meeting is adjourned.